Yeah.
Where is the?
This is desk twenty, this is desk twenty-one. Somebody's already recorded, question is, so it's desk twenty-one.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have a quorum, we're gonna get started, and I see we already have admitted the governor, he was here before I was, that's pretty good, pretty good action there. Let me just take a second, this may be the last time we get to do this, but I was thinking about some things last night, and just thinking about actually writing a column on what I'm thankful for this year, and one of the things that I'm thankful for is for the service of Governor Deal and Mrs. Deal, and his staff have served our state well, and this, what we're here today to talk about is a good example of the heart and wisdom that he has used in guiding our state the last eight years. Governor, we just want to welcome you this morning, and thank you for your service, and wish you.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and welcome to all of you, this is a brisk morning, and hopefully that will spur us all along to concluding the important special session that we are engaged in right now. I don't think I have to explain much of the details of it, but I'll try to touch on some of the highlights of this, of course, the primary motivation is to respond to the disastrous effects of Hurricane Matthew, and the portions of our state that were adversely affected by that particular hurricane. I understand this committee, Mr. Chairman, has two of the three pieces of legislation that are being proposed, and the first one, of course, is the larger piece of it, and that is as it relates to several different categories. The Governor's Emergency Fund, which we're taking funding and putting into that emergency fund to try to do several things, one is to be able to restore the budgets of some eleven state agencies that have already expended money from their budgets, unanticipated expenditures, so that they can complete the remaining very important functions that those state agencies are responsible for. We are putting money, of course, into the property insurance risk pool, here again, we have damages to state property, and as a result, being self-insured, we have to be sure that we put the money back in to cover those repairs for those state properties that were damaged. The landowner assistance portion of it, some fifty-five million dollars, primarily directed at rowcroppers for the losses that they have suffered, and some twenty million dollars in emergency disaster relief as approved by the State Forestry Commission for cleanup efforts on the behalf of timberland owners. The forestry commission assistance of a little over seven million dollars for the replacement of firefighting equipment and the normal equipment that they need for carrying out the functions of the forestry commission, and some seven-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars to build the consolidated Forest Service facility between Miller and Early Counties, which was to replace those two units that were damaged during the hurricane. The local statewide economic development projects are also in this package, and twenty-five million of that goes into the One Georgia Authority for financial assistance to local communities, and fifteen million dollars of it goes into REBA grants, and those, of course, are very important to many communities around this state. Transportation funding, a little over sixty-nine million dollars to deal with the disaster as it relates to the DOT and expenditures that they have made for roadways, and of course, their implementation of the cleanup of debris, which because of the delay at the federal level with an objection to the Corps of Engineers going forward with their traditional contractor, we asked permission to allow the DOT to assume that responsibility, which they did, and of course, we need to, we need to cover those expanded costs resulting from that. There is another feature of it, which hopefully will be of great assistance to a number of families, and that is the disaster tannif relief, this is for people who might not normally, it would include those who are normally entitled to tannif relief, but it would also expand the coverage and benefits for families up to three-hundred percent of the federal poverty level, and that is an important element because many of these people have lost virtually everything, and this will go a long way toward helping them in that regard. The jet fuel taxes here, right? You have the jet fuel exemption, I think there's been a lot of discussion about that, and we believe that extending this at least to the end of the fiscal year is the right thing to do, and that way, first of all, you will not have to go back and start sending out bills for those taxes that might not be exempt if you were not to ratify the executive order. I think that puts a pretty good overview of it, I know that your chairman will go into greater detail on any of the aspects of it as you go forward. Let me talk to you about the timing on this. For those who are the beneficiaries of this legislation, timing is of the essence, they need the help now, and I think you all have that sense of urgency to be able to complete your task here. We know that the House has already dealt with this, and I would hope that you would be able to deal with it in an expeditious fashion, and I can assure you that if you complete this task as of tomorrow, I will sign it so that the relief will begin to flow immediately, and I would urge you to do that. There are opportunities to revisit, and I feel sure that you will revisit many of the other aspects of this during the regular session coming up next year. Probably you will be revisiting it in terms of expanding beyond what we have done in this special session, but don't let that be an excuse for not doing what needs to be done now. I believe the urgency of the need is such that it dictates urgency on your part, and I would hope that you would do that, and as I said, as soon as it is placed before me, it will be signed, and it will begin to be implemented at that point. Mr. Chairman, thank you so much, and I am here to answer any questions, and of course, I have my able staff, my chief of staff, Chris Riley, and our OPB director, Teresa McCartney, and they can give you all the detailed answers if you need it, but I can assure you, your chairman knows those detailed answers.
Okay, let's see, we have got a few questions, Senator C., is this your light, is on?
Yes.
Okay, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Governor?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for your part in keeping Clayton County whole through all of this, as well as Delta Airlines, who is keeping our school system whole, but after that period, we will have a hole in Clayton County. Does this in any way mention Clayton County, the landowner of the world's busiest airport?
Well, as you know, last year, we dealt with the issue, and in making Clayton County and several other counties that were affected by the elimination of the sales tax at the local level, we made them whole with the appropriations that were made this past session, so we think we've already addressed that issue.
Follow-up. Is that the one-time hit, is what you're speaking to? Because I'm well aware of that, but anything going forward in terms of the continuous monetary loss, I mean, I'm sure that's what we are doing with the jet motor fuel tax to keep Delta, but in terms of Clayton County, that was the question.
Your main problem was with the FAA, because they deem that the tax you have been collecting has been illegally collected. We don't want to resurrect those concerns and get into a federal lawsuit and have to return and repay, so I think we should leave that one let well enough alone, because we have covered, and covered those splosts that carried out for, I think, a three-year period, and have covered and made whole those anticipated revenues, and those were paid for last year in those lump sum allocations.
Thank you so much, Mr. Governor.
Other questions for Governor?
Well, thank you all, I appreciate it, thank you for having us.
Thank you, Governor, thank you.
Good luck.
Let's give him another hand. So I'm gonna call House Bill 1EX and make some comments now, and then we'll open up the questions, we have the department heads who are here with us, if the department heads want to come on down and join us down at the podium, that way we have a question, and we can just step right up, and we welcome all of you, and we're seeing you here ahead of the appropriations hearings in the regular session, which won't be too far off. Very good. My presentation will be pretty short, the governor's already touched on a number of the things, and we've given you some handouts that has a lot of specifics on it, but let me just say as an overall statement that the increase of almost two-hundred-and-seventy-one million dollars increases the state budget to twenty-six-point-four billion dollars, this is fiscally sound. State only needs a growth of about two-point-three percent to meet the FY nineteen budget, and we're substantially, almost triple that rate right now. As far as the 1EX, the changes, the bill that came over from the House is substantially the way the governor presented it, but there are some changes, and I think I will feature those as well, but one of the items that the governor mentioned it is eight-point-nine million dollars for liability coverage for buildings, state buildings that were damaged by the storm, that basically puts our premiums back up, we actually had cut our self-insurance premiums on our state agencies, we actually had cut it, cut that rate last year, so this rate's gonna put it back up to where it was, but it's eight-point-nine million dollars to cover damages, totally eighteen-point-five million dollars. The twenty million for the Georgia Development Authority for recovery and cleanup for timberland will be in conjunction with the Georgia Forestry Commission and Commissioner's here, and he can address that if you like, on how that will be done, there's a lot of reasons for this cleanup and why it needs to be done expeditiously, the danger of pine beetles and the danger of forest fires, as we're seeing played out in California, and of course, we're fortunate not to have the wind and the low humidity they have out there that causes those fires, but frankly, the most dangerous thing you can have for forest fires is to have a lot of undergrowth and woodlands on the ground, so that's extremely important, and of course, to get replanning done as well. Sixty-nine-point-three million dollars is actually, or DOT is not state general funds, but is, we're recognizing House Bill 170 funds that have been taking in an increase for this year, so we're basically going ahead as an amended budget and placing those funds into DOT for, to assist with their costs that they've incurred in recovery and road repairs, and to give them some flexibility as well. There's sixty-nine-point-three million in motor fuel funds, and four-point-three million in general funds as well. We mentioned the Forestry Commission is seven-point-four million dollars for equipment replacement, that's not all that they need replaced, but the aging out of equipment, and of course, the heavy use during this time will necessitate some additional equipment, and that seven-point-four million will help that get done as well. Governor mentioned the two damaged offices, our locations for Georgia Forestry Commission in Miller and Early Counties, they were scheduled to be replaced anyway, they're being replaced by one forestry unit in Blakely, and that's seven-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars will cover that as well. Here are the changes that the House has made from the governor's original proposal, you may remember there was a nine-point-three million dollars in there for commercial medical school expansion in Columbus, that item has been removed from the bill, there was also thirty-five million dollars from aviation academy at Chattahoochee Tech, having to do with training mechanics for the airline industry, that thirty-five million has been removed from the bill as well. Those funds, it did not change the overall revenue estimate, changed those funds have been placed in basically two places, increased the amount of funds going into the Governor's Emergency Fund, and increased the amount of funds going to the Farmers Relief Program with the Development Authority. The Governor's Emergency Fund number now is sixty-nine million, three-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand and fifty-five dollars, and out of that, you can get that, get up to that amount pretty quick, the state's match for the FEMA assistance is some forty-two million dollars, that's the state match we have to pay, I believe it's twenty-five percent that we have to pay, just as a matter of note, when Katrina hit New Orleans, the state match there was over two billion dollars, I believe it was, so while FEMA assistance is wonderful to get, and we couldn't survive without it, but we do have a piece to pay in that as well. Then also, Governor mentioned about reimbursing local governments for local share of storm expenses, and that's about one-point-nine million dollars, local governments spend a lot of money right away that, in meeting all the things that happened all at one time, a lot of overtime, a lot of just public safety costs, and this will be of great assistance to them. There's twenty-point-five million dollars to pay the state match for the eighty-two million dollars in debris removal by the Corps of Engineers, there again, the assistance we're getting, there is a state match, so you've got the two big items already out of the Governor's Emergency Fund as well. There'll be increased costs, as noted earlier, as the state will have a match to pay out of the emergency fund for the disaster SNAP benefits, we used to call them food stamps when I was in the grocery business, now it's called SNAP benefits, but this is, there's a category of eligibility that's based on people's exposure to disaster, not based on their regular income or, you know, life as it normally is, it's a special category, but there is a match to pay, and that match may be as much as somewhere between eleven and thirty-six million dollars, but that's funds that we'll have to, we'll have to come up with, so that'll come out of the emergency fund as well. They have applied for those disaster SNAP benefits with the USDA right now. There's now fifty-five million dollars in the Georgia Development Authority allocation that will, that will pay for farm relief due to the storm damage, and previously it was thirty million dollars, that's a larger amount that, as the governor indicated, we don't know whether this is the last time we'll be talking about some of these amounts or not, we may be revisiting it in the regular session, but timing is so important to start getting this relief out there, and those farmers, the ones, the rowcroppers that are having to have loans coming due at the end of the year, I mean, there's a whole process that's gotta, that's gotta take place to keep people on their feet, so that they can either get replanted or stay in business and not lose their property over the next few months, so that's extremely important, and Development Authority is going to be working on a process on how we can handle helping the farmers, and I don't have all the details on that, but they're already working on that as well. I'm gonna end with those comments and go to questions, and as I said, we've got, Chris Riley is here, and Teresa is here as well, Teresa McCartney, and let me just take a moment to thank those two for their support of the appropriations process and appropriations committee over the years, I refer to them as problem solvers, we, through you all, we come up with lots of challenges every session and have for the last eight years, but they always found a way to make things work out, and we've been very fortunate to have good revenue growth, that's something we should all be thanked for now, I wrote in my column last night that I'm thankful for the fact that as we look for ways to help those in need in our state, we're able to do what we think we need to do without thinking about whether we have the money to do it or not, and that's pretty important, some states would not be in that condition to do that, so there's a lot to be thankful for there. So I'm gonna stop right there and entertain your questions, and we've got the experts here to assist us in answering those questions, so I see several, several questions here, let me write them down, and then we'll go in order. Senator Davenport, I believe you're first, is that your light at some, or is it? Your light, wasn't it, okay? Senator Sims, is that your light at some?
Yes, sir, and I would like to stand, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, and I'm standing for the people of southwest Georgia. First of all, we want to say thank you so very much for all of the effort that has been put into this budgetary process, because there is a real need to help all of southwest Georgia that was affected by the hurricane, and many of you don't know the devastation, the death of that devastation, it is tremendous, so everything that you're doing for us through this special session will definitely help us to rebuild and to rebound. Our hospitals became the hub of the community once this devastation came about, and I don't have a question, these are just comments, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman. They provided safe drinking water, places for those individuals that were in home care, a place for them to come, they needed dialysis or any other special service that they were receiving through home care was provided at the hospitals. Many of our residents were without power for weeks, not days, but weeks, because we have some very remote areas that were absolutely devastated, we lost whole grids, not just one or two stations, but entire grids that had to be rebuilt, so we are so thankful for all that you've done, we ask that going forward, we've learned some things, that maybe perhaps independent wells for our hospitals, because in Albany, when the system went down, water, gas, and light, which provides water to the hospital, then the hospital was challenged with that also, had they had an independent well, they would not with that also. Had they had an independent well, they would not have had to worry about that. And there are other asks that we have, but we'll sit down and talk about it later. But I just wanted to thank all of my colleagues, the governor, the governor's office, and those commissioners that are responsible for this budget. So, thank you very, very much from southwest Georgians. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Lucas.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to probably refer to my good friend, Mr. Riley, from the governor's office. As we deal with this economic package of trying to reassess and try to bring folks back whole, not, not as far as any profit, but just put them back where they were, what will happen with the mom-pop operations? And when I say that, you might have some farmers might have 75 or 100 acres who might not have crop insurance. You also had various businesses down there that might have been a lawn service, have notes with the banks and everything. And now, there is no lawn service to take place. So, I mean, you've got a note on your equipment, your cars, everything. Where will we be and what will we do to help those operations to get back on their feet?
Senator, let's take the first question, which I have, and like to agriculture. The first step is before we now, an immediate action with agriculture, because our farmers, we're developing 45 million state assets, we're putting there for farmers to be able to go in and access those funds, whether that's gonna be a guarantee, if that's gonna be some sort of assistance to farmers to be able to prove that, from the Constitution. We don't know yet, but the Florida will have the flexibility, those funds, if I may, to address those needs. Now, let's take your second part of your question in relation to small business in the Hartsfield area. As you know, with the declaration at the federal level, we're working with the Small Business Association as well as FEMA to have those immediate no-interest loans and other grants available to FEMA that will work through with the federal government, so that they make those available to us, that will work through with Commissioner Nussbaum, the common ECA, available for a lot of small businesses to be able to access. We don't have those means available at the federal level, but we did implement those for the federal government with the Small Business Association and also with other resources that the farmers that will flow through FEMA from the federal declaration.
Okay, Senator Burke.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to echo the comments that my colleagues have made as far as thanks for the responsiveness of the General Assembly, obviously the governor's office for being here and trying to deal with this crisis that we're facing in south Georgia. I want to know, take another moment to thank the agency heads over here. I'm not gonna call them out because I'd miss somebody, but most all of them got texts from me during this last three or four weeks, some more than one. And I can't describe how responsive and professional they were in meeting the needs of our communities. And I want to thank them publicly for the work that they've done, did during that time. Most of them were in my district more than once, and if they weren't there, their staff was. And I also want to publicly thank the federal guys, all of our folks in Congress, either the congressmen themselves. Austin Scott bothered me so much that I finally had to call him and say, "Leave me alone. I'm good." So, we had great responses on the federal level. The White House communicated with me almost daily that first week with their legislative liaison. So, again, the professionalism of the response, I think, was tremendous. And, you know, one thing we didn't see, we didn't see headlines that the people did not feel like they were being served by their federal and state and local governments. And I think that's a tremendous thing that we should be thankful for. Another headline I want to bring out that we didn't see is we didn't hear anything about our mothers and fathers and grandmothers and grandfathers having, dying in nursing homes and in hospitals because they didn't get the care they needed. And the fact that we didn't hear those kind of horror stories, again, the people that provided those hands-on care to take care of those needs, in, I can tell you, very, very, very challenging circumstances. We need to thank those, and that's first responders, this is nurses and doctors that worked, you know, 24/7 for several days with water on floors, ceilings dripping, food was just what you could pull together. We had people bringing food to the hospital to help feed the patients and the staff, of course, that some of them had been there for days. So, again, I think that we've got a lot of heroes that are unsung here. I asked the Georgia Hospital Association to put together a request for some financial assistance for the rural facilities who went without power, went without internet, which means they couldn't build. Doctors' offices were closed, some of them, for almost two weeks. Therefore, they weren't ordering labs. All of those ancillary things that keep a facility going, they're without. And I've had a conversation with the chairman and on both appropriations committees about this. And I feel like it's something that our rural hospital network and our medical community need some assistance too. And I understand we can't do everything for everybody, but the rural hospital network in our area is the economic engine. Outside of the school system, they're the number one employers on every one of our counties. And if we start adding to the fact that they're already under a tremendous burden, this is just one of those things that could just tip a few of those facilities over to not being able to manage. So, again, I want to ask the appropriations committee to keep those folks in your prayers. And as we move forward into the amended budget, certainly want, would ask for some support for those requests. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Senator. I don't see any more questions. Any other questions? All right. I sense you're ready to take up this bill. So, I would ask for a motion on House Bill 1EX. Have a motion from Senator Burke. Do pass. Second, Senator Tillery. Other discussion on this motion? Okay. All in favor of passing out HB 1EX, please raise your hand. Thank you. All opposed. I do not see an opposing vote. House Bill 1EX passes out by any analyst vote. We'll now call House Bill 5EX. Senator Walker, I believe is the governor's floor leader presenting this bill. Senator Walker, if you'll come on up, we're ready to go here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning, committee. I'm here this morning to present House Bill 5EX, which would ratify the governor's executive order relative to the jet fuel tax, the suspension of the collection of jet fuel tax in Georgia. This is a topic that we have discussed in the previous session earlier this year. It's a topic I think you all are quite familiar with, so I'll try not to belabor the point, but I do want to make a few, few points on this. This morning, I'm wearing some cufflinks that have the number one in the state of Georgia, and that's to signify Georgia as the number one place in the nation to do business. I don't know if any of y'all have heard that or not, but for six consecutive years in a row, one of the reasons we're the number one place in the nation to do business is we have a favorable tax system that is favorable to business and a low tax burden.
Exactly.
But in the area of jet fuel tax, we lag the nation. In fact, Georgia has the fourth highest fuel tax burden among the 21 states with large hub airports. And that's not a position we want to be in. In this modern economy, global transportation is more and more and more important. It's critical. I mean, we're now accustomed to ordering something and getting it in a day or two. To be a competitive state economically, we depend on our ports, and we depend on our airports, and that's critical. Currently, we do not have a sales tax on fuel for ships for global transportation. So, this would be not unlike that. Currently, we do not tax energy for manufacturing with a sales tax. This is another economic tool that we need to have to keep Georgia competitive. The annual economic impact of Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport is $64 billion per year. 64 billion. It's the largest economic driver in Georgia and in the southeast. It's, it's one of the primary reasons Georgia leads the nation in business. And fuel is the airline, is an airline's second-largest operating expense behind labor. Our high tax burden on jet fuel creates a significant annual competitive disadvantage with states such as North Carolina that borders us. The governor's proposal to exempt sales tax on jet fuel will level this playing field with other states and position Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport for continued growth along with our other commercial airports. It will benefit companies throughout the state whose business depend on global transportation. So, that's what I have to say about it. Be happy to try to answer any questions, if you have any. That's Forrest Gump.
All right. See if we've got some questions. Senator Mullis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Senator Walker, wouldn't you say that this is a tax cut?
I would say a vote against this would be raising taxes on the citizens of Georgia. So, yes, sir, I agree.
So, if you claim to be a fiscal conservative, you would be voting yes for this bill?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question.
Senator Walker, I believe the legislature voted in the last session to not extend the exemption on jet fuel. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I understand.
We didn't take it up.
There was no action taken then to give this exemption, to continue this exemption?
Yes, sir.
Okay. My concern is that, I think this has been mischaracterized in the press. I think there's more sentiment over the question of whether this exemption should be extended or not. I think it's been confused with Delta Airlines and NRA. And many people that believe a level playing field is important. I know you can argue both ways. My question is, if we're gonna stop the tax, why don't we stop it on December 31st instead of June 30th? If indeed, the legislature is gonna have to take this up anyway. I've heard people argue that it's gonna take, it would take another day in session. It's gonna cost us about $40 million, but it's gonna save about, from 22 to 25 million dollars, excuse me, it's gonna cost $40,000. And it'll, if we stop the exemption, it'll benefit the taxpayers of the state from 22 to 25 million. What's the logic behind that?
I believe we'd be in a position where we'd have, if we stop it on, at the end of the year, we'd have to send out tax, tax notices and tax, and starting and stopping with the Department of Revenue, you've asked them to stop collecting. Now, we're gonna have to go back collecting it until the legislature gets around to acting on it again, and you might, might stop collecting it again. I just think June 30th will make it a lot cleaner, a lot easier for us to deal with as a body, a lot more reasonable for the Department of Revenue. Also, I want to make a point that the, the tax that the state has been collecting, the sales tax that the state has been collecting, does not necessarily, it does not go to your local airports. I think you all are aware of that. It goes into the general fund. So, the 3% that the state has been collecting up until this executive order has been going into the general fund. The monies that the local governments have been collected, which is, the governor already spoke to that, we've made them whole. So, this is not taking away money from your local airports. It's just keeping Georgia in a competitive economic position.
But isn't it true that if we put the date at December 31st of 2018, that those taxes would not have, those back taxes would not have to be collected because the rest of the bill ratifies this action from the, from the date of the governor's executive order until the end of the year? So, there would be no collection of back taxes, but it would just change the date of the secession of the tax exemption from the fiscal year to the calendar year? Isn't that correct?
I think what you're saying is technically correct. I just don't think that's the best way to handle this. I think we need to push it out to June 30th so that we have time as a legislative body to really fully vet this, not, not try to be pressured in a special session and not be rushed in the 2019 session. It'll give us time and give the Department of Revenue time to do whatever this body decides they are supposed to do.
Other questions? Senator Mullis, I believe.
At the proper time, I'd like to make a motion, please.
All right. We have one other question. Senator Harper, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Senator Walker, you may not know the answer to this question, but maybe we can discuss it offline and try to figure it out. I was looking at the fiscal note and looking at the price of jet fuel that was used to calculate the fiscal note. And the high number is $2.28. Looking at jet fuel prices across the state, they range from $4.12, 475, 430, 471, 567, 695, up to 866 at Hartsfield. And if you back out the 4%, it goes down, you know, a couple, to 396, 832, 457. I go on and on and on. My point being,
Sold.
My point being, I'm just curious where we got the number $2.28. And it, and it may be just an average of the total price of what was sold on jet fuel, and then that figure popped out, $2.28, because right now, if you go to Fulton County, unless you got a special tax exemption to get you to the 419, or special exemption to get you to 419, you're gonna pay 695.
Senator, we're gonna try to get you that answer.
Let's see if I can repeat that.
Let him say it.
That figure came from the U.S. Department of Energy. Apparently, there's a cap on the dollar.
Go ahead. Step up there and give us answers.
The information comes from the U.S. Department of Energy. It's last year's average price of jet fuel. You and I both know for building up airplanes this year, jet fuel's a little bit high. Well, the Legislative Department of Audits prepared a fiscal note, had to use those figures from last year to give you a sound fiscal number. That number will change next year, but that's where it comes in.
That's fine. I just was curious because jet fuel is higher. So, and since you invoked Forrest Gump, is this like a box of chocolates? Do we know what we're getting?
I think you've had ample opportunity to read and study the bill, and as sharp as you are, I'm sure you fully understand it.
Senator Mullis, all the other questions. I think- I think Senator Mullis fits to make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Appropriations Committee pass House Bill 5EX.
Have a motion. We have a second. Second Senator. See? Other discussion on this motion. See no hands or no marks on the computer? All in favor of passing out House Bill 5EX as presented by the House, please raise your hand. Thank you. All opposed, please raise your hand. Thank you very much. House Bill 5EX passes out, uh, 21 to 3. Thank you. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, for your coming and being a part of this, uh, providing relief to Georgians. Is your meeting...
That's what happened. I'm really interested.